All right, so I'd like to call the meeting of the, this is a special meeting of the Groton Board of Education being held on April 22nd, 2025 at 5:30. The meeting is entirely bear Zoom. This meeting is to discuss the letter, the certification letter for receiving federal financial assistance and requests for certification under Title VI and SFAS. And then it says Harvard. So we have the letter from the federal government to sign. And I'll ask Susan to talk about the letter and then the board can ask questions and they can make their comments. And then we could decide whether to ask Susan to sign the letter or we don't want her to sign the letter.
So I will start, I had sent out an email, it was on the vacation, but I had talked to Dr. Charles Hughes, who's the deputy commissioner. And he had alerted Charlene Russell Tucker that, you know, we were concerned about our federal funds. And I reminded him that we are a military community and we do receive impact aid funds. And, you know, there was the request to sign off on a letter. And we had received information from the commissioner that said that she, as the SEA, was responsible for collecting data from the LEAs, which are the districts. And she said that because we did sign off on Title I, then we had already indicated compliance for the Title VI. And that is true when I sign Title I every year annually. So he did not think it was necessary to sign a letter. He said he had not heard of any other superintendent signing a letter. But then Jay had sent some information, which was actually a notification that included a signature page. And I read that carefully from the United States Department of Ed. And it really does speak to DEI and making sure that we are in compliance with Title VI and we are not looking to, you know, move a particular race or religion ahead of another. And certainly in our district, we look at equity as for all and having access for all students in our community to do all the amazing, you know, courses and, you know, anything that Groton has to offer is open to all kids. So that's what I've learned. I have not heard back from Charlie. He was going to see if there were any other schools, but we would be one of the only ones, I believe, that were signing off. And I just want to make sure that we don't bring light. I did talk to my counsel and they, the only concern they had was that it could shed light on Groton if we are the only ones. And I don't know if that needs to come with our own words of saying that, you know, while we sign off on this anyway on Title I, that we're signing off on this to assure that as a military community, we are definitely in compliance of Title VI. So, you know, those are just some thoughts to think about.
Susan, do you want to talk about how much aid we actually get from the federal government?
We do have a revenue page that included for 26, the six, over $6 million of impact aid. We actually received 6.25 million last year. And as I told you, we were told to use the revenue that we received the year before, because it does take us a year to gather all that to predict for the future. So, and if you do that each year, then you're, you're actually putting into education what has been received and will continue to be received. So between that Medicaid, our federal funds were 6.5 million last year and our state funds were the 26,205 and so a total of $41,530 and $933 were collected. But then I also had a sheet that I sent you. And I think Matthew has put it in a comprehensive document. But if you look at all the other federal grants, which are the title grants, the, we, you know, we've received 21st Century Grants. We've received IDEA, ARPA IDEA, the National School Food Lunch Program. You know, when you add that all up, ARPA's School Mental Health. There are two full pages that I sent out to you. And that was a total of last year, 17,016,327, just last year. Looking more like $6 million, 6,871, along with that other revenue source that I had read off with Impact Aid for the federal, which is another six and a half million. So that's over 12 million just for the year we're in now, but it was over 17 million last year. It's a lot of money.
Yep. Ian, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, just a, well, I did send out a number of documents earlier today. Doing some research on this. There is a lawsuit in process with the state of New Hampshire versus the Department of Education. And the last it stood, there was a, that's where the extension of time came from. The initial deadline for this compliance letter was February 28th. And then it got moved April 24th. The reason it got moved was because the, the judge, I mean, it wasn't exactly an injunction. They just basically said, it was in order to postpone the deadline to give the time to submit their briefs. And there was a hearing on the 17th. That came out in my third email, the one that's labeled number three. And that article was written today. And so basically like, it sounds like the judge may be issuing an injunction on the ability for the Department of Ed to enforce the compliance letter. There's a lot of technicalities with it. And the way that it's worded on both sides, there's a lot of, they're, they're, well, you know, from the government side, there is some shaky language there. And it's a, you know, the fact that they're basing on the Supreme Court decision with admissions to Harvard, that is, it's, it is a legal extension of logic that's coming from that that is questionable. And that's what's been challenged by New Hampshire and a number of districts up there, as well as the ACLU. And so, you know, I think that needs also to be considered in this too, like, like nothing is final yet. And as far as, as far as enforceability goes, these were written as guidelines and not a rule. Since a rule can be challenged in court and overturned. So that the, the federal government is not even going all in on their assertion. This is just essentially issued as guidelines or guidance. It's not a rule. So there's, there's a lot of factors at play here that I think are worthy of consideration. And I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Ian. Dean?
So what Ian seems to be saying is that Brown versus Board of Education of Topeka really only applies to the city of Topeka. We can't take that ruling and apply it anywhere else. I don't think that's how Supreme Court precedent works.
That's not what I'm saying.
Well.
I'm saying that, that, you know, the, the decision that, you know, the guidance was based on was applied to a certain, a certain approach to admissions. And what has been extended to cover is, is something different.
Right. So the Department of Education Office of Civil Rights is telling everybody, hey, just like we've tried in the past, please don't discriminate on a basis of race. And what we're saying is, well, we want to hedge our bets and we're looking, oh, wait a minute, man. We're looking for reasons to just continue on with whatever we're doing. What are we doing that we're afraid of actually certifying that we're not discriminating on the basis of race? I'm not getting this. We're willing to jeopardize millions of dollars of funding because, because what? We're being asked not to discriminate on the basis of race. That should be a no brainer.
Right. And I guess I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I'm finding myself on a reflection. I'm just, I find myself more in the camp with the State Department of Education. Our state, with their guidance that they issued, saying that we've already kind of affirmed all that in all the ways that we need to.
Okay, no problem then.
Yeah.
And let's, I wish our lawyer was here, frankly.
Well, we already got advice from Floyd. I sent you his advice. He said, sign, basically he said, sign the letter. You don't want to jeopardize impact aid. And if you're already doing it, he doesn't see any downside of signing the letter. I, I sent that out to you.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's Floyd's response.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Jay, and Jay, and then Jen.
So as Ian points out, this is going to be the subject of lawsuits for some time. And the threat to cut funding could be very short term. You know, it would be devastating to the district and the town to lose $17 million in funding. Theoretically, if we are simply being asked to certify what we certify annually anyway, I don't see the downside in certifying this. And then let the courts decide what the interpretation of the Civil Rights Act is in these matters, because we're not going to decide that tonight. But in the meantime, we just do the certification that we've already done so that we are not endangering this federal funding and putting our town and our district at risk. I mean, it really comes down to that. And the rest of it will play out over the years.
Thank you, Jen. Jen?
I agree with both Dean and Jay. We cannot, as elected officials, put the town at risk by not signing this. We sign it all along. And going back to what Dean said, as long as we're not discriminating based on race right now, what is the issue of signing? We definitely, if we don't sign this and we lose the funding, we've just, it's like, almost like directors and officers, right? Like, we just violated, we as individuals violated, like, what was in the best interest of the town because we didn't do something. And Dean, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I think then we become liable because we didn't do something that we should have done.
Do you have a response to that or you're letting that one go?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna let, I want to let that one go. That's above my pay grade, whether we're personally liable or not. I like to think we're not, but it's a bad show.
Yeah. Anything else, Jen?
No. Like I said, as long as we're not discriminating now, I don't really see the issue and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Adrian and then Mike.
Yeah, I've just got a question and I don't know if anyone can answer this or not. But, but you know, in that letter, it talks about scholarships. And whether we directly award scholarships or they happen through ceremonies at the school, do we have to change anything that we do as far as that goes? Because certainly some scholarships are towards certain, you know, they're, they're aimed towards certain members of the community. So, so I'm just wondering if anybody has any ideas on that.
Susan, you have an answer to that or?
I really don't, but the only one I can think of is like the Martin Luther King Scholarship. But every, I, I mean, I think all, it's open to all students who, you know, apply for it. And I think there's a fair process in that. But, you know, you just questioned that it, it's the interpretation of someone at the federal level looking at something that we do that's good for all kids. And they could interpret it and misinterpret it as being, you know, for one particular race or another. And they may not even know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just worried about us having to change some things, way we do them. And I know that the scholarship is independent and it's not part of the school. But, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just kind of worried if we, if we agree to one thing and then new rules come out, new rules come out, it's like death by a thousand cuts. You know, and I'm, I'm worried about agreeing to this and then having new rules thrown at us. Like, like seems to be happening in, in other areas of the government.
Okay. Mike?
Yes, thank you. I'd like us to at least read or hopefully post the actual certification letter that we're talking about, because there were, there are two letters, right? There's the Dear Colleague Letter that the US Department of Education sent earlier. And it has specifics about scholarships and things that I found troubling personally and maybe implications for our school system. But then what we're talking about today is the one titled, that came out April 3rd. It's titled, yeah, the reminder of legal obligations undertaken in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance and request for certification under Title VI and SFFA v. Harvard. This one, if you read it, it's, it's very general. And I mean, that the first page is just, you sign. But even the stuff after it though, I mean, it goes into sort of the rulings, but it's not, I mean, the word, I don't know if the word scholar comes up on that or not. But I think we should read that. And then as far as I'm concerned, like, what's this, sorry, mental hugs are barking, but it's the responsibility of the, as we know, the state of sending it to the US DOE. Our responsibility ends in sending it to the state. And then they can do with it what they want. But I, that's, that's where our responsibility ends. And, and I, I don't see much problem with signing that letter that we have up on the board. Because presumably we already are in alignment with Title VI and, and our anti-discrimination. So, and so, so I would say if, if we do have a, like a formal vote, or I think our, our motion should be, I don't know if we can require the superintendent to sign it, but maybe urge her to sign it and, and also deliver it to the, the, the CT, State Department of Education, you know, say tomorrow or before the 24th.
And Mike, that's why I think many superintendents were really concerned. Because the way it really reads is that the SEA, the state education associate, you know, commissioner is responsible for collecting certifications, response, responses from their LEAs, which is us. And that they had those 10 days. So we asked, so are we to do this? And we were told, you did not need to do anything at this time because we signed off on the title, title grants, we've already done that. So we did ask, because there were a lot of concerns, superintendents, how do you handle this? And if we were to sign it, and I don't know where this United States Department of Ed letter, I think Jay, you were, you had sent that out. And I don't know who the lawyer was that talked about the certification of compliance or if that was also on the site for the federal government. I don't remember getting that from the State Department at all. So like, who does that get sent to then? Does it get sent only to the state? Does it have to be sent to Washington?
No, it says you send it to the State Department.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty clear on that.
Yeah, it's very clear, Susan, where you send it.
Okay, all right.
Andrea, I don't know who had their hands up, but I saw your hand up. Mike, are you done?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. It, I guess, yeah, I'm pretty much done, but I just would say, you know, if, if we send it to the state and they choose to do nothing with it, that, that's, that's on them, right? But we still, like, you know, we've kept their options open and we've kept our options open.
But do, I know I've said it verbally to the deputy commissioner, but do I put a note that the Groton, being the, their largest military connected community in the whole state, in this region, stands to lose a lot of federal money with impact aid? There's no one else who has what we have and rely on, like we do.
Yeah, cover letter is always helpful, for sure.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, the state wants to guarantee that they will reimburse us the 17 million.
You want me to put that in the letter?
Yeah. Andrea, you all set, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Andrea?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King has nothing to do with any of the, the schools in New London County. It is online. We're not even taking hard copy applications. Everything is online and the students go to the MLK, the K, the site online. So in, in terms of, I don't know what the, the Black Student Union does. I have no idea about that. That's entirely within the district. I don't know how they handle it. But in terms of us, it's online. It has nothing to do with any school in New London County, even though it is especially designed for students of color, in particular African American. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Okay. I, I can't see who has their hand up.
I'm trying to put mine down. Okay.
Does anybody, Ian, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, I put it up again.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So yeah, just, there is a difference between the, so the, the language that's in the Dear Colleague Letter and then there's also with what's in this compliance letter. And what's in the compliance letter definitely is scaled back incredibly from the language I was using in the Dear Colleague Letter. But the concern with the Dear Colleague Letter and how much of that's going to be, you know, what are we actually signing off on here versus what is not? What's being implied, what is inferred? You know, I have concerns with the, the, the intent that's, you know, implied with the Dear Colleague Letter. And, you know, as far as like, looking at the specific language that, that they're targeting. But, you know, looking at this compliance letter, it's another story. But initially, Susan, you had sent an email saying that you were fine with the state's guidance as far as, you know, not signing this compliance letter and then letting, you know, going under the, the umbrella of the Title I sign off.
Yes, that's what I understood as of like April 11th. And then Jay did send this, this letter. Can Jay speak to where he found this letter?
This compliance letter?
Yeah. The one that's with regard to Harvard.
Ian, could you take the letter down for a second so I could see who has their hands up?
Sure.
Thank you. Jay? Can I see anybody?
Well, it's on the Department of Ed website.
Okay. Anybody else have their hands up? I don't.
I don't.
Go ahead.
But, but Ian, even, even was before me, Mike still has his hand up.
Mine, do, okay, I don't see anybody's hand up, but Matthew and Mike.
Oh, mine has too.
Mine's by accident, but the, the letter can be found as a link to the, at the Department of Ed website, you know, www.ed.gov. And it's a press release. It says ED requires K through 12 school districts to certify compliance with Title VI and students v. Harvard as a condition of receiving federal financial assistance. That's dated April 3rd, 2025. And if you, you go down, it actually has the words, thus certification, highlighted for a link. And you can click that and get to this exact letter that Jay sent.
Okay. Okay, Ian, could you take the letter down so I can see? Thank you. Yeah, everybody should have the letter because I, I sent it out again today. Matthew?
Thank you very much. Let me just start with this word about discrimination and the logic we bring to this word. I, I think discrimination, like many other words, has become a political term. And while we may agree amongst us as to our definition of discrimination, it is being interpreted by certain forces in a political way that bears little resemblance to, to us. So I'll put that aside. I do agree with Ian's righteous indignation at the administration holding children's education hostage to a political agenda, which was clearly articulated in Project 25, though disavowed by a certain party's candidate. But I learned as a firefighter not to enter a running building, a burning building without appropriate protective gear and a team ready to back me up. And as an EMT, when I came on an accident scene, to stop for a moment before approaching the vehicle or the scene, to discern a mechanism of injury and to compartmentalize my feelings so I can remain true to my mission. Now, I'm not telling anybody else how they should vote, but I want to explain my decision to instruct the superintendent because it's a policy. This is not an operational decision. This is a policy decision. We can instruct, in my humble opinion, the superintendent to, to sign the letter. And taking an oath of office, I agreed to do three things. Everything in my power to support Groton Schools' mission of teaching and learning, to support and conform to the Constitution of Connecticut and the US Constitution. I took it and take it very seriously. This is going to play out in the courts. That's above our pay grade. It is clearly above our pay grade. And if we get into it and challenge them, we will be like the grass when two elephants fight. We're going to get stomped. Secondly, though I'm one of 11 on the Groton Board, I'm the hair on the pimple of the tail of the elephant in national political power. I will and always have been active in the political process, but this administration's actions will be fought in federal agencies and in the courts, places where none of us have any standing. Third, we must be aware of the political potential consequences to our children allowing, if we allow our justifiably strong emotions to override our rational behavior. Do not think for a moment that the administration will stop by threatening Title VI funding. You know, this is just part of the game, one at a time. Our exposure as a military district is greater than any other in Connecticut, I believe. And I've heard nothing, you know, not, the governor hasn't contacted me and the legislature hasn't contacted me, indicating they're willing to step up to hold us harmless. So there's a time for a stand. And it, this may be it for some, and that's a matter of conscience. I respect that. For me, I put teaching and learning ahead of the risks that come with righteous indignation.
Thank you, Matthew. Anyone else? Dean?
Yeah, my hand's up, it's too white.
Stop it.
Look at it, see?
Go ahead.
I, I didn't like the muppet color, that's why I chose another.
You don't like the yellow color?
It, it just reminds me of Bert and Ernie. I don't know. I, I am filled to my gullet over the years with this. And I get it. We hate children. We push old people over the cliff. We're looking for excuses to starve people. I got it, I got it, I got it. I got it. What's nefarious here is there is literally a multi-billion dollar industry. There's money and power on the race question. A lot of people are very well meaning about all of this. Smaller number of people are making a nice living at it and they love to see it as each other's throats. They would love nothing more than for this issue to just keep rolling on and on and on and on and on and playing on people's emotions. I'm emotional now because I have had it. We're being asked to not discriminate. I have been doing contracts since the 1980s, dealing with bureaucrats. There's always been language. Make sure you're not, you're certified that you're not dealing with South Africa directly, indirectly, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There's all kinds of stuff all over the place. I've never heard anybody up until we get to this issue, think about, but what, how are the bureaucrats going to interpret it? What's the Department of Labor? And I've seen the US Department of Labor in action, by the way. How are they going to interpret things? You want to see the high-handed nature of their, their affairs. But now, all of a sudden, now, now, we're very concerned about potential bureaucratic interpretations and, and, and the meaning behind things and the intentions behind things. And, and what do we do? To me, this is very simple. This is, I promise I'm not discriminating on the basis of race. I take it that we're not. I know we use the I know we use the term diversity, equity, inclusion, D I, et cetera. That has unfortunately or fortunately become, you know, the, the shorthand for other people's practices, where they do sit the little kids down and they do sit the teachers down in professional development. And they make sure that you know you're white. You make sure you know you're black and your respective place is on the totem pole and who's responsible for whom and all that jazz. I don't think we're doing that. I don't know. There may be some PD in there where, where teachers are asked to confess their sins and their whiteness. I don't think we're doing that overall. So what is the problem that all of a sudden we're wringing hands and clutching pearls on this? Uh, we are governed by thousands and tens of thousands of bureaucrats. Do you know what the federal regulations look like? That's, that's just the federal regulations. Never mind the code, never mind their internal handbooks and guidance letters and other colleague, you know, uh, Dear Colleague Letters. Dear Colleague Letters have been coming out of these, out of these departments for years, but now we're choking on this one. Everything else has been aye aye, sir, but this one requires soul searching and, 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 um, moral stans and whatnot. It's real simple. We're not discriminating against anybody on the basis of race. There you go. Now, if the state says you don't have to sign it, you don't have to sign it. Don't worry about it. I want the state in writing saying that they're going to indemnify us when we lose federal funding. Simple. I don't care. Make it as diplomatic as you want. But I, I'm not going to be on the board when, when it hits the newspapers that we lost millions of dollars in federal funding because, well, you know, there's a pending lawsuit in New Hampshire and, uh, other people are up in arms about all this stuff. Of course they're up in arms about all this stuff. This is a way of life for people. I know because I've heard it my whole life. It's a way of life for people. A lot of you can't think outside this box. God damn it. I'm sorry for my language. I had just had it on this issue. You know, there's a line in South Pacific, you know, the musical? You have to be carefully taught on the racial issue. We are, I am afraid that we are teaching a lot of kids very carefully, very carefully. And you think you're solving something and you're not. You're heightening consciousness. You're centering race. A black child or a white child has to remember first and foremost that they're black or white. And then everything else flows from that. That is the very definition of racism. The very definition of racism. I, I'm, I'm just going to end it right here.
Thank you, Dean. Even though I feel what Ian is saying, I cannot, um, support not signing the letter. I, I feel like Dean, if I don't see that, and I'm surprised Ian doesn't feel this way too, because he's always asking for stuff in writing. If we don't have that in writing, that if we lose $17 million from this, from the federal government, that the state will reimburse us, I, I, I cannot not sign the letter. I'm not signing it. Susan is. So, because $17 million is a lot of money to lose. I have to think first, the effects of the children in our community. What will happen even if we lose $6 million? Where are we going to get $6 million from? So I would encourage Susan to sign the letter. We're already doing what they want us to do. So I really don't see a downside in signing the letter. So I'm supporting what Dean said, what Matthew said, what Jen said and what Mike said. I support all them. Um, Ian, you have your hand up again?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say, um, you know, that was going to be my follow-up question to Susan about the, uh, the, the, uh, my previous turn to speaking was, did we receive any other communications from the state about assurances for support should things go south?
No, and certainly not in writing. I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing that, um, I have not heard from them at all.
So, so are you in a, a different position now than you were when you sent that email?
Uh, well, I've learned more about it, Ian, and I, I feel what everyone is feeling. We don't want to lose this revenue source and, um, we, we certainly want to protect that. I do think it would, I'd take some time tonight to craft even a paragraph to the commissioner explaining that Groton serves the largest military impacted community. We're very proud of that. And these, these resources are essential to our town. You know, they really cover some tax laws based on that. But, you know, that's why we're signing and we can't afford not to.
Right, right. No, I get that. And, 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 and so, yeah, I just wanted to kind of, you know, get that confirmation from you that, that, you know, your professional opinion is, is, is in a different position than it was last week.
Well, I really, I've labored over it, Ian, to be very honest with you. Because, um, certainly like Dean says, you know, our, I think all of us feel that we, we aren't to discriminate, that we don't give people different positions based on race or religion. That, you know, it's access for all and especially for our students. So I'm a believer in that and, um, I'm a believer in Title VI, but, you know, if that's what I'm signing off on, I'm okay with that. But if it's more than that, that's, you know, written within a letter that could, you know, come back at us, I would be uncomfortable with that.
So that, you know, that being the case, and also looking at, I think it's important to note the difference between the, uh, Dear Colleague Letter that we received back in February versus this actual DOE compliance letter. And, um, the, the language that I was concerned about here, there is a lot of equivocation inside that language, you know, so it's asserting of, of certain DEI practices that can violate federal law, which, you know, uh, when Dean's shared his criticisms before about DEI things, I, I never disagreed that heartily, uh, you know, beyond the fact that, I mean, there are some fair criticisms to like the way some things are rolled out versus others. Um, you know, and then that all comes down to like a nuts and bolts adjustment. Um, but the overall principle is another thing. Um, but a lot of the reading that I sent out in the three emails that I sent out that, that had the, the, numbered headers, um, numbered, numbered subject lines, have to do with, with the language that's inside the, uh, the back and forth. And, uh, if, if, I would encourage everyone to kind of review a lot of that. Uh, because even if, you know, I mean, it sounds like, you know, the consensus is that, you know, the, the, a number of board members are in support of, of signing this compliance letter and, and just kind of, you know, moving along. Um, I don't know if I, I can do that in good conscience, but, uh, you know, obviously we vote and the majority wins. So, uh, you know, I, I feel comfortable with, with the outcome if that is indeed the outcome. That's our process. But, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of details to this and, uh, you know, if you read the government's case in the way that they've been, um, asserting their position, they're actually granting the fact that nothing could be yanked immediately anyway. Uh, it would all be subject to, uh, an investigation and hearings and things like that. So, um, even though they came across very strong with the Dear Colleague Letter, once they're in court, you know, as, as again, has been the pattern, uh, what is, you know, said, you know, where there's no accountability, uh, it can be all a lot of bluff and bluster, but when you get down to it in a court of law, uh, things get, you know, very nuanced very quickly and, and the, the strong assertions that are put out there uh, whittle down to something, uh, very small. Yet still somewhat significant. So, I'm, I'm ready to, to move forward, I guess, uh, and we just, you know, hold the vote and, and get on with it, um, and let, you know, uh, but I, I will, uh, you know, probably, uh, you know, hold a position and principle on this, you know, just for the sake of not being unanimous.
Ian, can you take the, 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 will you have up down? Because I can't see.
Sure. I just wanted to draw people's attention to, to these paragraphs towards the end, um, where they kind of talk about that and they use a lot of qualifying language. Not saying all DEI is illegal. It's saying that certain DEI practice may or, or could violate federal law. And, you know, those illegal practices, which would be their assertion, would be subject to, to, to the penalties. But again, like all that would have to be adjudicated as well. So, there's all that. So if we're confident in what we're doing does not violate federal law, this actual compliance letter doesn't seem to be, uh, trying to influence curriculum or, um, you know, what we're already doing. So, um, I'm comfortable with the outcome, however it may go.
All right. Thank you, Ian. Jay, good. I, I couldn't see because Ian had that thing up. So, go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, yeah. I get it. I, I just, um, for, for those that are listening who may not be aware, um, do, do you think we could just read the actual letter? Um, not the marginalia, not the, the footnotes, not the things that could play out in court, uh, but just the paragraph that Susan would be signing?
All right, go ahead. Do you have it?
I do. And, and again, I sent this along with a legal opinion from Maguire Woods, uh, which is a law firm. Basically, uh, the letter simply says, reminder of legal obligations undertaken in exchange for receiving federal assistance and request for certification under Title VI and SFFA versus Harvard. Uh, requested certification. On behalf of, and we would put Groton Public Schools, I acknowledge that I have received and reviewed this reminder of legal obligations undertaken in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance and request for certification under Title VI and SFFA versus Harvard. I further acknowledge a compliance with the below and assurances referred to, as well as this certification constituted a material condition for the continued receipt of federal financial assistance and therefore certify our compliance with the below legal obligations. So it's acknowledging that we've received it and we will be compliant with the law. Keeping in mind, the law could change between now and, and the next few years, that those interpretations could change. But for now, uh, we're just saying that we're going to comply with the law, which I understand we do anyway whenever we receive the title funds. So,
And really the paragraph below too, Jay, focuses on Title VI and civil rights.
Right. The Civil Rights Act of 1964. Right.
All right.
Would you like a motion, Bev?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, I move that we instruct the superintendent to sign the requested certification, reminder of legal obligations undertaken in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance. And to send it on to the State Department of Education as requested or as instructed.
Any, um, a second? Ian, do you have your hand up?
I'm just, um, waiting for discussion.
Yep. Um, Matthew, can you read it one more time, the motion? I move that we instruct the superintendent.
To sign the reminder of legal, legal obligations undertaken in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance. And forward it to the Connecticut State Department of Education as instructed.
Uh, Andrea, go ahead.
Okay, I, I just have a question for Susan. I just want to make sure that I understand where you stand. I understand where you stand on this. Are you ready? Are you, uh, that I'm understanding that you want to sign this or will sign this?
I will sign it and I, I know how important it is for Groton to receive these federal funds and I'm in total agreement with Title VI. So if it, if it's about that and not discriminating against race and religion, I'm, that's always been in my heart.
That's good. That's good enough for me. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, the motion was made by Matthew and we had a second from Adrian. If I'm correct. Right, Adrian?
Yeah, that, that's correct. I, I do have one comment though. Um, in exchange for, what's the meaning of that? Or how does that kind of?
I think that's quid pro quo. I mean, we, we, we comply with the law and they will give us some money. But I'm not a lawyer. How do I know?
Jay, what do you, I mean, Jay and Dean, what do you think about the motion?
Well, I mean, the, the letter, the letter says that a compliance with the law or the, their interpretation of the law, whatever you want to say, uh, is a material condition for the continued receipt of federal funds. That's, that's bread and butter. You want federal money? You want state money? There are, you know, you certify that, you know, you don't discriminate against women, that you have policies against harassment. I mean, whatever the, whatever the law of the list is. Everything, everything, you know, you want money? Your compliance is a material condition of the receipt of that money. That's, that's what that is.
And we do that with Title I annually.
So you're okay with the motion as written, Dean?
But, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Jen, you have your hand up?
So, I am voting for this because it's the right thing to do. I am not voting for this so that we can potentially get funded or not funded or whatever. I think that in exchange of should be deleted because we're voting so that we're compliant with the law. And that's just my opinion as a non-lawyer. It's just, this is being asked of us. We as a district know that we don't discriminate. So that's not an issue and we're just signing this to sign it.
So how would you like the motion to be?
Just to remove, like, we're signing this in exchange of, so, um, or blah, it's just, we're just signing this, right? Um, I don't know if I, if we just strike out like a couple of words or we stop. Or we just say like, hey, Superintendent, Superintendent Austin, we are requesting or telling you or whatever to sign this and that's it.
But it does say when I sign it, Jen, it is saying those words as I sign.
No, I know, but we don't need to put that in our motion.
Well, that, it doesn't need to be in the motion necessarily.
Ian, Ian, it's not your turn yet. Please.
I know. I'm just trying to identify the fact that it's in the title of the letter.
Okay. Wait, I call on you unless it, it, unless the conversation goes haywire. So go ahead, Jen.
So, yeah, no, no. So if it is part of it, that's fine. It's already stated as part of what we're signing. I, I just don't understand like why we need to reiterate it, but either way, I'm, I'm, I'm going to sign and I'm going to vote for this to be signed. So regardless of how it's worded, it's just something that when Matthew was reading it, it just caught me off a little bit.
Ian, can you take that down so I can see everybody? Um, how do the other board members feel about in exchange?
I'm willing to delete those words if you wish.
Okay. And how would it read?
It would read, I moved, uh, removed to instruct the superintendent to sign the quote, reminder of legal obligations, end quote, and to return the, uh, signed certification to the Connecticut State Department of Education as instructed.
And how does everybody feel about that?
You have to ask Adrian if he's okay with that.
Are you okay with that, Adrian?
Yeah, I, I, I would change my second or yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay. So, all right. So, well, we didn't vote on the, uh, motion, so we can correct it now. Mike, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, so I, I like that solution. I just, uh, we can just put a dot, dot, dot inside the quotes there. It was like, we're just referring to that document, but we're not listing the whole thing. Or, or list the whole name in the quotes, which is quite long, but, um, I think we know what we're talking about.
We put in an ellipsis, put in the three dots.
Okay.
You should put it in quotes though. We absolutely should.
Yeah, I'm all set.
All set. Ian?
Uh, thank you. Yep, yep. Um, thank you. Uh, yeah, so, I mean, uh, my objections have with this, um, you know, centered mostly on, 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 you know, the manner and the method in which it's been rolled out and, uh, you know, it, uh, just, it seems unnecessary in one respect and, and, you know, could be construed as, as opening the door for, um, inviting some other critiques. But at the end of the day, I mean, it is what it is and, uh, we gotta do what's right for the district.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, we'll, we'll just let the vote play out as it does. So, but, uh, yeah, there's a lot of problems with this, um, just in general, in principle.
All right. Andrea?
I would not mess with this. I will leave it exactly as it's written and sign the thing, pardon me, as it's written. I can see fooling around with the way the. I can see fooling around with the way the word is uh is presented. I can see that coming back to bite us, so that's what I said.
All right, I'm gonna take a vote on the motion. I'll have Matthew read the motion one more time and does somebody have their hand up? Nope. All right. I have Matthew read the motion one more time and then I'll take a roll call vote. This way we know who's voting what way. Go ahead, Matthew.
My move, we instruct the superintendent to sign the quote, reminder of legal legal obligations, dot, 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 close quote, and to uh forward, God, it's not gonna be the same wording, and to send it to the Connecticut State Department of Education as instructed.
And Adrian seconded that, correct?
Yes, second.
Okay, all right. I'll start with myself. I'm voting yes. And then I'll go to Dean.
Aye.
Yes, okay, then I'll go to Matthew.
Yes.
Okay, then I'll go to Andrea.
Aye.
Then I'll go to Jay.
Aye.
And I'll go to Jen. Jen? Yes? Okay. Then I'll go to Mike.
Yes.
And Ian?
Uh, no.
Okay, so the motion passes. I think I get everyone.
Just for the record, uh, I'm a yes.
Yeah, I got you down, but, oh, oh, I'm sorry, Adrian. Thank you, Adrian. I'm sorry. All right. So the motion passes eight to one. Um, Susan, you are instructed to sign the letter and send it off to the State Department of Education.
Aye aye.
And the reason being, we don't want to lose the federal funding.
Right, and we do want to comply with Title Six. I mean, I believe in that.
Yeah, and we already complying anyway, so. All right, anybody have anything else? All right, thank you, everyone, for coming. Don't forget tomorrow's the R T M Education Committee meeting at seven at five fifty-five in classroom number one. Okay? It's by Zoom too. You can, it's by Zoom also. So if you don't want to attend, um, you can look at it by Zoom. Participate. The only one that's going to be allowed to speak other than the administration is Adrian. I will not be there. I'm gonna be out of town. Adrian, I sent out an email this afternoon. Adrian will sit in in my place. He will be the only board member allowed to speak tomorrow.
Except for me tonight.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Dean. It is six twenty-five and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.